All right, at this time I'd like to call the meeting in order. We need to review and approve the agenda. I need to approve the agenda.
Second.
And if I were to say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Don't worry. Review and approve the minutes from June of two thousand nineteen. The agenda. Are there any senior, senior five minutes or one minute?
Nope. Make a motion on table that reviewing the minutes until next meeting.
Okay, second. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, table. Um, review and approve financial reports.
Anyone who has or still do that. Um, general fund got a cash balance of just over two million dollars. Uh, fact one hundred twenty-five thousand two sixty-eight, one second sale. Two forty-four, seven ninety-six, debt service four thousand five eighty-eight. Management two nineteen, eight fourteen, nutrition sixty-five oh one, activity seventy-seven, four forty, trust agency one thirty-nine, four forty-five. Mr. Odenberg, the general fund cash balance is not part of the balance. That will come later.
Okay.
Fact the C A R stuff.
Will that be like September? Okay. So that is, sorry, what did you say? The general fund balance is not the same as the unspent balance. And we'll have our unspent balance after the C A R.
Should, it's due September fifteenth.
But could be adjusted. Any question about bills?
I got a couple. Um, this is computer info concepts, student info system for fifteen thousand.
That's our student information.
That's the, in the campus.
Okay, so that's a yearly fee.
Yep.
Then I have the Alexandria library license.
Next, the library, it says protect our books and, and, and.
And so that's a yearly fee.
Yes.
This is power school group.
Power school, that is the talent end of fees for evaluation software.
And then this is power schools, the activity schedule.
That is the calendar that the kind of receives us for scheduling activities.
And then, I think it was J Y's CPI course, remember that?
Yep, we sent, we sent a teacher to train and consider all to be trained to come back and train everybody else in CPI.
CPI stands for?
I don't know what stands for, uh, to train in there, top from ten down.
Okay.
They teach to, in a meeting, the top from ten down, the bottom, you can't straighten.
So that was for one teacher they called?
Yes.
Um, that's all we have. Any other questions? I need a motion to approve the financial reports.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second?
Oh, second.
Um, favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, how about items of discussion?
We have Kathy Ensland here, she is level for the local seat on the A E A board.
Thank you for coming. Hi, I'm Kathy Ensland. Um, so you know, Lord by background, the reason I'm here is Dr. North decided not to run again. So, um, I, and I have spoken with him, I'm friends with George, and, um, so I'm gonna run for his office. I don't know that I have anyone running against me, but, um, I am here and I would like you to see a face with the name. Um, when it comes time to vote, you'll get a ballot, all schools that represent my area, you're one of them, will get a ballot. You'll get, that will change this year to the November election. It used to be the A E As were the September election, but now we'll go to November. So you'll get a ballot in around September, and then you will vote on that. And, um, I would like you to vote for me. Again, my name's Kathy Ensland. Um, my husband and I farm over south of Dumont. And, um, I have been in education for years. Was a teacher, then a principal, and then a superintendent for over twenty years. And I retired, and then they hired me at the A E A, I was assistant chief with Dr. North, that's why I know George so well. Um, and then I retired from there, and now I work as a school consultant with school administrators of Iowa. And I mentor new superintendents in the state. And, um, I'm part of a, I'm a coach, I get instructional coach for principals around the state. I work with ten principals. And then I also teach leadership classes in seven of the nine A E As. So I'm all over the state. And one thing I do wanna compliment you guys on, and I don't know if it's you or the city, but I go to a lot of towns and a lot of schools, and I can never find a school. And there's, the signage for this town was wonderful. It's like by the block, and so I just, whoever's in charge of that, good job. I wanna say that. Um, in terms of, uh, my role with the A E A, I don't think you'll see a lot of difference with than when George was here. I think George did a great job, to be honest, and I know he's from your district. But I've said this to every board I've talked to. Um, and I wanna continue, you know, being involved. And I also, when I was superintendent, I've always been in smaller schools. I've had a soft spot for small schools. And stayed there, even though I probably could've gone bigger, I decided to stay. Um, and that's where my focus will be when I represent you at the A E A. So, Dr. Joy, you have any questions for me? E N S L I N. And I always tell people, I'm like the diabetic ensn, only sweeter. So you gotta remember that.
Thank you.
And I wanna thank you for letting me take.
Where do you live now?
We live, uh, we go to Dumont, and then you take that road to Austonville, you go to the cemetery, and we farm west of there, about five miles west of there. So I'm kind of a retired farm hand. Grandpa got too old because he kept working out fences, and so now I got grant staff. And the, and the mower, I mow a lot, so. But anyway, thank you for letting me come and take your time and have a good summer.
Yeah, thanks for having me, yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, board items of discussion.
Um, I have a question. I have not gotten update from Tim Stragi since he acknowledged the acceptance of the offer on the property. After the last fourth day, I emailed him, he would accept his offer pending that he would serve again with his individual offer. And I have not heard back from him since he moved out. Um, at the Allison Building, we got some corners that are settling. I did get a quote from Randall Construction, I'm working that. And they're gonna come and fix the two worst ones right away. And I will have Lucas get down and pick them up. Those that, it looks like the water stayed underneath, they settled. And I didn't know if there was more, I saw the two, but Randall said we could provide more, so I'll have to go with that.
What are the one?
The cor, on the corners of the building, um, the ground has settled underneath, flowers washed them away, and the whole corner of the building is sagged, we broke the bricks out.
Okay.
So are they just the bricks, or they go walls and floors?
I think, I think it's just the bricks on the outside, as far as I can see, and they came and looked and said Marcus quoted, so it's twenty-two bucks, twenty-two hundred bucks a corner. For the ones that are doing it right now.
And you jack them up and fill back in and use them somehow?
Yeah, right now they're trying to match bricks.
And it hasn't like sagged enough that you think it's causing structural like?
No, I don't, I don't think, I don't think that part would be able to cause structural damage, and it attacked under my, quite a bit more than what I have. Um, it was brought to my attention, um, Mr. Trulson got something, actually, about bamboo back there. So, uh, look, there's, there was a big gap, I don't know if it started with animal or water, but it's that one in the, we're by my office, so we'll go with that. Um, baseball's at St. Ansgar tonight, play Jamesville, they were supposed to start at five, they backed it up to six, but it was England's game, it's at four thirty. So it's supposed to start at six o'clock here, and that is a regional game. Yesterday, I met with what I call the cabinet, which would be the head of the departments and admin team, to make sure that we get things straightened out before school starts. Um, make sure we have everything on the same page, letters have gotta go out with all the yearly notices in it, uh, calendars, activities calendar goes out. Make sure that everybody's on the same page with where we're prioritizing jobs and all those things.
Are we having a good look at filling with the jobs?
Everything's sold except for, well, you know, I sent you guys today, um, in Spanish, we use it as night. And I think we'll probably have to do that, but I will learn online.
So. You haven't had anybody apply for the Spanish position, or?
We had one, it wasn't, it wasn't a very viable candidate, it was whatever state.
So the only other option is?
I have to learn online.
On line?
Yep. And then we'll keep advertising, maybe we'll get a semester graduate, right, in the second semester.
Is, is that what's that sort of thing? Sorry, I was saying.
It's, it's better to put the subpar teacher in. And then have to deal with that down the road.
What about when Clark's delivering the Spanish teachers, that's something we can share?
That is cool. I have a talk, I have a talk, keep talking. No, everybody's Spanish programs are full of mine.
That's the end of that to give.
At Clark's, we had to, we've had to, we're probably gonna have to ship, get to Charles City in the E L L services, because we don't have an E L L teacher over there. English language learner, P S L, their home language is Spanish.
What about the kids that don't speak Spanish, can they afford to Charles City?
No, we have a teacher over there, but he's not licensed to do E L L. Be licensed to teach Spanish and E L L are two different things.
No, but they have a Spanish teacher over there.
Yeah, but he's, and, and, oh. I don't know whether, uh, Mr. Ryder talked about that.
It would be something we could, I don't know if we explore fully, like sending kids elsewhere, but if we offered on, or could we look and explore that a little bit more?
It might be, it'd be pretty difficult at this point, because everybody schedules herself, so you'd have to, we'd have to redo the whole schedule here to work around somebody else's schedule.
Right. So, I guess if I'm lying, it's hard to learn a separate language, so. I mean.
Well, Mrs. Holmes, Mrs. Holmes licensed in Spanish, so she'll be around, how could it have any question?
Yeah, I was just, you know, for a kid, I don't think that's a question.
But if you really apply, it's hard to fill a physician.
Yeah, I mean, you can't fill a physician without.
Yeah.
Or independence.
Yep, just, I think we're just putting one body in there to deal with issues down the road.
I think if there were kids that wanted to, or I mean, if it worked with their schedule, like I think other, like Clark, so I think they do allow kids to, you know, get tuition and go to like wait really for different classes or whatever, you know, if it worked with the schedule, but I think logistically it'd be hard.
It'd be really difficult, because then they're.
It would take a lot of time.
But they're for a class and driving for at least another class period, maybe two.
Right.
Probably at least two, can you have each way?
Yep.
And what's if like first hour, it was fixed up, you have first or last hour or something?
Isn't that awkward for them, right?
It's through Iowa Learning Online. It's, uh, something the state uses for small schools to meet their accreditation requirements now. The state's changed the rules on that, so if small schools don't have, can't find a foreign language teacher or English teacher, anything else, then they're allowed to use those for accreditation purposes.
Anything else on the list?
Nope.
I've got a problem, um, I guess I just feel a little bit out of loop on some of the stuff like the negotiation stuff, and Bobby and I are in the negotiations committee, and you kinda handled that, and, you know, we never got updates, or what was going on there again, you know, we're busting his jaws about communication stuff, so I guess, you know, why, why are we kept in the loop on some of that stuff? Is my question.
I think, you know, in the end, it was whoever could make it, that's how we, or, in the beginning, the first meeting was Lori, myself.
Right.
And Mr. Foster, and then you kinda came in at another meeting, and then, I think we were in the loop, because we always, we talked at the meeting, and we stuck with the program, and we had that separate meeting with, um, I'm trying to think, Mr. Foster, the attorney, myself, and you, and then we had Lori on the phone, and we never changed the plan after that.
But, but I guess I didn't find out about that we had a tentative agreement until we got to that meeting here, or a week or so ago. You know, we could've sent out an email saying, hey, you know, we got something going, you know, or tentative to be solved. You know, I guess just so we're in loop.
Yeah, sure.
You know, kinda like the letter we got from the attorney, you know, round out about at the meeting, you know, a week ago, you know, would've been nice to know, hey, maybe that was in the works, and, you know, we at least could've not been surprised at the meeting with it. And that's all I'll say about that, because of, you know, being a closed meeting, but.
Mm-hmm.
I guess it'd just be nice to have a little more communication also.
Sure.
You know, if that stuff's going on.
Yeah. We can send out more emails, you know, we try and do the best we can.
Yeah, and I don't see, you know, usually a text or a call, for me, is a lot better, because I'm not around emailing that much.
Sure, I can definitely send even more text messages as things come through the vine.
I appreciate it.
Yeah. For sure. All right, anybody else got anything? All right. IPB resolution and training. We got somebody else? On May thirty-first, two thousand nineteen, Joel Foster filed a formal complaint against North Butler Community School District alleging a violation of Iowa Code Chapter twenty-one. The complaint alleged that the school district violated Chapter twenty-one of the Iowa Code by amending the agenda during a meeting to conduct an open session with substantive discussion while giving fewer than twenty-four hours notice. The IPB board accepted the complaint on June twentieth, two thousand nineteen. Pursuant of Iowa Code twenty-three point nine, the parties negotiated and reached an informal resolution. The parties agreed to, the school district will acknowledge, on May thirtieth, the agenda was amended during the meeting without twenty-four hours notice, without providing a reason for the amendment. The reason is required by Iowa Code twenty-one point four two B. Second thing, the school district will approve this informal resolution at the open meeting and include it in the minutes for that meeting. And then the third thing, the school district will provide all elected officials and appropriate employees with copies of the IPB sunshine law, PowerPoint slides in print. At, uh, that following address, I'm not gonna read. The school district shall conduct training for all board members on Iowa Code Chapter twenty-one and twenty-two. And this part doesn't make a whole lot of sense, but the city may utilize, I think it should say, the school may utilize the PowerPoint training available on IPB website, or schedule training through the Iowa Association of School Boards, which can be found at the following website. So, I need a motion to acknowledge this complaint. Second. And Shelley has the slides printed off for everyone. And then after the meeting, um, go to the website and watch the training. And then at the next meeting, we'll have, and Mr. Foster, you will too, um, we'll have a, a page, and we'll all sign it, that we actually, you know, read it over, and.
So like with the beginning of the, our meetings, when we say appropriate agenda and make changes, we need to make changes before, we're not supposed to be doing that?
When we give a reason for it, but it can't wait till the end of that. We, we have, we have to give a reason.
What, like? What would be like a good reason?
Something that needs to get done, and it's not, you can't wait thirty days till next quarter meeting.
Maybe we got a great applicant for our Spanish teacher that came in this afternoon, so we make a change to prove that.
So that would be a change, you would have to?
Yeah, because otherwise, if you take a chance, lose in Canada, and did something, signed like a contract for God.
Or if emergency comes up, and you'll need a contractor to come in and fix something right away. Like if that year permission went out in my office.
Or like during a flood or something like that.
I think in the past, we've done it frequently, and I think there was some confusion around that, so I think we have to be more careful about that, and we shouldn't really be doing it very often. It has confusion. So. I think it's a good, I think it's always good to refresh on, you know, what the laws are, and make sure that everybody is aware of, you know, what open meetings are, and that we are operating on the basis of the elected by public, the public, we work for the public. And so everything we're doing, we wanna make sure our public people are aware of what's going on, and we do everything that way. So I think it's a good refresher and a pair for us to do.
So is there a handout that I'll need to pick up for someone?
Yes. I can get it to you.
Or you can download it off the board website, I have it posted on there as well, Lori.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's just a PowerPoint.
All right, thank you.
So did, we get a motion to, okay, second?
No.
All favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, next is the milk and bread bits.
Um, we only got two dairy bits, Anderson Erickson Dairy and Prairie Farms, um, they're pretty close, and I believe we've used Anderson Erickson for quite a while. Prairie Farms does not provide straws or give credit for outdated product, whereas Anderson Erickson does, and we've been really good about working with this one stuff, this sour and things like that. So I would recommend that we do what Anderson Erickson has, and has in half the past.
So they do give credit for rotten milk?
Yep.
I make a motion to stay with Anderson Erickson.
Hang on, are they the ones, sorry, are they the ones with the moldy bread too?
No.
Are we going with them for bread, or would you bread bits separate?
Bread bits is separate.
Okay.
It's on the same.
It's on the same page with it.
No, it's on the same.
Oh.
Are they the same?
Okay. And then that, bread bits, we only got one bit back down from Biden over there, please. So I recommend that we approve that one.
And is that really normal use?
That's the only one.
That's the only one we use.
That's the only one we have said from.
Do they credit us back for moldy bread?
Yes.
So make a motion to approve Dumbo Bakeries and Anderson Erickson Dairy.
Second?
Second.
All favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Approve school fees.
Because the way the law is written, you know, we do not need to raise our lunch fees, because we have more than three months for our, our nutrition programs. Um, we are required by law to raise the adult fees, so my recommendation is that the only fee that we raise will be the adult lunch from three seventy to three seventy-five, and then, oh yeah.
Activity tickets.
Oh yeah, activity tickets, sorry. Um, recommend that we raise those, our activity accounts have been very negative, we've had a lot of issues, so I would recommend that we raise those from thirty to forty for students. Um, adults for ten, the ten punch would be forty to fifty, and then senior citizens thirty-five to forty-five. So I would recommend that we close the rest of those. They haven't been changed, prices on the activity tickets haven't been changed since I've been here.
Is that comparable to other schools that have this?
It's actually, we're.
A little low.
A little low. But we don't want to jump too much forward here either.
Right. I need a motion to approve the fee.
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
All favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Approve return to play policy.
And this is a long one, so I don't expect you to read it, but this is what comes from the Athletic Association and the National Federation of High Schools. Um, basically, it's laid out with all the definitions of interschool activities, and it has protocol laid out for students to return to play. Um, basically, we're gonna go through a six-step process before they are allowed to participate back in an activity, and they have to receive a written clearance from the doctor to even begin those activities. I think our people have done a really nice job of monitoring our kids and making sure we get them back, but we, we need to have this one passed, and then the return, if you remember last month, we talked about the return to learn, that's not until next year, so. But we'll put that in the list next year.
I need a motion to approve the.
Return to play, I'll, I'll make a motion.
Second?
Second.
All favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Laura, are you still there?
I am, still there.
Okay.
Just making sure. You make motions if you want to, you know.
Yeah, I will. I'll let you guys handle that.
So the, um, district developed service delivery plan in committee?
Um, the district developed service delivery plan is, basically, we have a committee that's put together, um, this admin team, um, Jody Albert from the A E A, Rob Morton from the A E A, Katie Deveraux, Angela, Angie Coop from the A E A, school counselor, um, special ed teachers and parents. Um, they sat down and went through our service delivery plan. Um, I wasn't able to attend, because I was at the district when they were doing it, and then it went on the district website for comment, and then they finished the plan. And I would recommend that we, uh.
Is that the one where the teachers are working?
Well, yeah, the teacher, there's some.
There's some that are no longer with us.
That's what I was wondering, if we should change the names before, or before we approve it, or?
Well, this is, this is the, this is the group that was together for this last school year that, that did it.
Okay.
And we just, we just need to approve, because it missed all the credit for us to approve. This is, it was a, uh.
So this isn't for this year?
No, this will be, this will be for, this was for last year, and it only has to be done every five years.
And then we'll point different people the next time, because I think the other question I have, because there's two people, I think there's two people that don't work here anymore, and then we have Emily Nasher as a parent, and she also works in the school, so I don't know if you actually want a parent, I mean, she's both.
Well, it's easier to get hold when they're both. Um, but also, the A E A people, um, half the A E A people around here aren't on the internet, they're either.
So that has to be every five years, should we just wait till it's corrected, or has it been five years?
It's been five years, and we need to approve it. They, I mean, they did it, they did it all the right way, it's just that we need to approve that committee, the committee that went through the plan. Because that's the committee that we worked the plan for us. That's just part of all of it, that has to be done for us.
I make a motion to approve the, um, development service delivery plan in the committee.
Just one more question, though, like, we continually probably develop, it's a development group, but so do you think that we will nominate or reappoint people sometime this year?
Probably not this year, probably be, if, if needs change, then we'll have to sit down and go through it, but usually it's, it's a five-year process, where we have to have that group together for, for every five years. We'll have like three or, two or three, four meetings to go through it.
I was just concerned when you, we have a group of people on here.
But, but they, they went through it already, and they've done.
Yeah, I get that, just so we know that they'll be people there.
They're just basically proving what they've done at this point.
Okay. Okay, you made a motion, second? All favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, approve vision and mission draft.
Um, that's down, that's down there is North Butler Strategic Plan, uh, two thousand nineteen to twenty-four, that's the draft that we've been working on with the A E A since we added professional development. We're back on January second, um, moved, uh, leadership teams to the buildings now. And we've come up with different collective commitments for each building, and I would recommend that we approve that draft.
What's it called?
It's called, it's the Mark Butler, two thousand nineteen North Butler Strategic Plan. It's the second.
I've got it, thank you, sorry.
Sorry, it took me a while, thank you too.
So is the following a little bit completed, Joel?
Yeah.
I'll read the basic part of it, since you guys can't see it in the audience, it just says that the vision is education to meet tomorrow's challenges. The mission of North Butler Community School District is to ensure a safe, positive, and student-centered learning environment, which empowers all students to achieve lifelong personal excellence. And I'll just read the core values and linger stuff, but core values would be the Bearcat Way, which is be kind, be respectful, be responsible, and be safe. Integrity, follow the Bearcat Way even when it's difficult. Excellence, strive to be your best, and continue to grow. Empathy, understand, and be sensitive to others' backgrounds and feelings, and I think you kinda, I think some of you were there when we did that, but it, but really, the strategy behind developing this plan was also trying to be more student-centric with our values and goals, instead of thinking about it at, from adult perspective, I mean, it goes both ways, but we really wanna focus mostly on the students, and bring all the values and beliefs up through the students, and all of us resemble these, um, goals and values and missions, and I, but I think they did a really good job when I read through, especially being involved in the process with everybody. And I, I think they did a really good job when I read through, especially being involved in the process with everybody, it was really positive, and I think the goals are right on, in my opinion.
So I felt the same way. I think it's strong.
Yeah, the wording was good. So if, if anybody want to approve this draft.
I'll approve the draft.
The draft for vision and mission. Right, second? One second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say aye. Motion carries. Approve LLI goal Title One update.
It's LLI goal. It is, it is the program that we've been using for Title One. We've not had the complete program. We're changing Title One teachers, and between them and Mrs. Tracy, Mrs. Endelman, they thought it would be good that we had the entire program, and actually, this is a, it's an update to get us through grades four and five. So we had K three, but we didn't have grades four and five, if I remember correctly. The merchandise price is forty-nine fifty, which I could have approved, and shipping takes it up over five thousand dollars, so that's why we brought it to the board, and that would be, that'll come out of Title One for us.
And it consists of what?
Books. It's got nine different cartons, it's got books, it's got testing supplies, I don't understand. Everything is needed. I think there's even some iPad type of stuff.
I need a motion to approve the LLI goal.
Make a motion.
Second? All in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Approve curriculum items. A family consumer science textbooks.
Um, with the teacher coming in, she's requested that we get some family consumer science textbooks. Price on those textbooks, what she needs is eight thousand four hundred fifty-three dollars, and then the Renaissance renewal is nine thousand seven hundred fifty-seven dollars and fifty cents, and that, that covers, I think, the starter reading. What's the other one? AR, accelerated reader stuff, and those things.
On family consumer science, do we have books in there currently, or what have they been?
As, as they are, they're probably pretty old. I agree. I think Mary's been just teaching from the things that were in her skill set. I don't believe there's any textbooks at all under.
So what, what can these readings, like, how to sew, like, six dollars?
I have, I have seen it. I would, I would assume it covers everything from pumpkin sewing, child, child, and they have all those things that are included in the curriculum.
I know.
How many books does that cover, because do we even?
I don't have that.
Kids are signed up?
I don't have that information.
So we have, well, there's a price, thirty thousand, do you know how many books that covers?
I don't have, I don't have the quote, but Mrs. Endelman probably got the first email with the total price.
Is it required for junior high?
Um, they do, they do, they do exploratories. We're required by law to have exploratory programs in the, in their career education areas.
Guaranteed number of students?
So what, what is that, a seventy-year period?
They're required by law to have the insurance, they pay for six weeks.
These books would cover them, Boston High School?
I, I don't know the answer to that. That'd be a question you'd be sending to Mrs. Endelman.
Can I table this one, or do you guys want to have somebody send more questions?
Yes, my only question, you timing to get a, you know, time for a class this fall, if we don't do it now, we'll wait a month, you know, they're in August, and she's going to want to use them.
Don't you want to be Dr. Ferro?
I think we should probably, you know, just going to need a guideline to teach, probably it'll be helpful. And we know there's a guaranteed number of students, which I, I mean, that's probably.
I don't, I don't think they'd be asking for something that they didn't need, and I know the kids all went through a register.
How many? How many books do we actually need? And there might be, there could be other life skills in those books, you know, like even balancing checkbook. It's just, it's hard to know what the curriculum really is, because there's a lot of subcategories that can fall into family consumer science, so without us seeing the text.
Not, not put her on the spot, but she'd be a prime candidate, come in and talk to the board about that.
Yeah. Okay. So, I mean, I'm, I'm fine with what you guys have here.
I'll second both of these motions.
To...
Purchase that stuff.
Okay.
Who are you next? I'm just half the teacher, just give us more information.
Yeah, usually, usually I get more than just an email with the, with the total prices. Usually I get the quote.
Right.
I didn't get it this time, so I think they were, I think they were pretty late. I think the vendors were pretty late getting the things to Mrs. Endelman, so I just got this even way yesterday.
Alright, so that was a motion in a second.
Sort of sounds like demand.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Chromebook purchase?
Um, the Chromebook renewal purchase for elementary, we're looking at fifty units at two hundred and seven dollars and thirty-five cents a piece, and then the Google Chrome Management Council, which we have to have, I think it was forty-five, forty-seven. Total is eleven thousand six hundred and thirty-one dollars, and that would be one cent sales tax for that purchase.
I need a motion to approve the Chromebooks. And the Chromebooks, I'm sorry, this is for replaced ones we've already had for the programs.
Then we rolled out, yep.
Rolled out, okay. What are we doing for what do we roll out?
Um, we either can sell them to the public, or we can sell them back, or we can keep some for parts.
And that's one cent sales tax, or packs?
I think we robbed some of them for parts, right, Melissa? The Chromebooks?
Yes, yes. Or could we do the same? I mean, the Chromebooks stay with the student, right? They get them in?
Not in the lower grades, no.
They don't, they stay in the same class?
Yeah.
Okay, I didn't know if it was like the iPad or, I mean, math books.
Um, in the upper grades, they assign them to, and so it's easier to keep track of if they're taking care of them or not, because they get a little bit rougher with them, but the younger classes, they stay in the car.
I need a motion to approve the Chromebooks. Second? Second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Approve iPad purchase.
Um, iPads, the iPads that we have in the elementary actually go back to the old chargers. They don't have the like new charger on them, they're still there, and a lot of them have become non-functional. Mrs. Tracy would like to replace, replace those, but we got a quote for sixteen, ten packs at three thousand seven hundred thirty dollars a piece. That extended price is fifty-nine, six eighty. They have quoted with the case, it would save us almost six thousand dollars if we didn't order the cases with them, and those stay in the car, so the cases aren't, aren't necessarily a necessity.
Do they fit? Like, do the old iPads have cases? Would they fit in the same cases?
I don't, I don't think they do have cases. I think they just sit in the car.
They're only, they would be the little kid, you know, like, take them on the cart and drop them.
Yeah.
It might be better in that cases.
What are the iPad's for, what curriculum?
It's for K two, where we don't have the Chromebooks.
So what, what do they do with them? What are they?
Um, they do a lot of things. They use them for, what, they seesaw thing that they use for the parents now. They give assessments on them, and they use them, they use them for a lot of different things. The, the assessments we do, they do on them, the seesaw, I know it's great, because the seesaw, they can take video of the kids actually doing stuff, and then it's available to the parents right away as the kids are doing it on there, so the parents can actually see what they're doing.
So that price is only for sixteen?
It's for sixteen, ten packs. So it's a hundred and sixty of them.
We need one to spend time to buy them. No one's spending time to buy them, it's a need one. Probably just.
And that, that does include iPads for the teachers also.
Do we need that many, though, honestly?
Um, that's for...
Teachers?
That's for K two, so we're looking at a hundred and twenty kids and twenty-some teachers, and then a few extras. Yeah.
Probably, well, I don't know. If you're not having every kid, I mean, it's every kid in every classroom, or do the carts get shared?
The cart, the carts will stay in the classrooms.
Okay, so they are.
So, but, but yeah, each classroom will have, have a selection of iPads. We ran into some issues with that last year when it came to testing.
Not having enough?
Yeah.
And have a few extras, you know, if you have issues with one or something like on testing day, you know, we've got, you know, hopefully enough extras is not an issue.
Or you got some, if you gotta send one into the AA, if you've got extras.
But do the kids actually take the test by themselves, or does it somebody administer, you know? The old kids, I don't think they're all taking the test at the same time.
But they, but they'll use it in the whole classroom at the same time for different things.
Okay. So what fund does that come out of?
It'll be a couple of ones on sales tax.
I looked at them before.
They're two fifteen, one nineteen.
So we have like three hundred and seventy-five thousand right now. And if we take out eleven seventy.
We have a whole?
No, the two together, the two together, because it can come out of either.
Oh, it can come out of?
So if we add.
Either one cent sales tax.
We got like twenty.
Do you have one cent sales tax listed as the capital projects?
That's the same. That's, she has it on the sheet of silo, I believe. That's what they used to call it.
Well, right now, we're looking at...
Yeah, capital projects.
A hundred thousand dollars for all, for all the expenses that we're working at tonight.
Hundred thousand?
A little more, probably.
We have two forty-four?
Hundred.
There's, between the two, there's about three hundred and seventy.
Hundred and five thousand, I'd say. Because of the building improvements, the twenty-two hundred dollars per quarter, I didn't have that on.
We don't have any big building projects or anything, we don't have any really big bills to come out of until the end of the year, when we pay the, the, you pay the bond down for this, unless we do.
And property tax comes in?
Well, sales tax comes in monthly, and then property tax comes in September, March, right, October?
Well, we, I have not gotten so confused.
Okay.
It's, and she says it's listed on the side of the right side, see silo.
Silo's not on it. She's got it listed as a, as a capital project.
Capital project, yeah.
Yeah, we did change it.
We also talked about the school parking lot. Do we still need to do something with that?
Um, we did have some discussion about that, and you guys have a lot of cyber charging with someone else.
Because that would also come out of keys.
Yes, yep, and I, I got an email back from, from, you know, make it off of their door, you know, I asked for that copy over there, so I want to talk about that some.
I think the good thing about the iPad purchase is we haven't made one in a long, or I mean, it seems a little bit larger, but we have not updated those, you know, we're, we're kind of, every year we're doing those other devices, so I think it would be a purchase we make this year, and we wouldn't make it for a few years.
Probably for four or five years, probably.
Yeah. Mm-hmm. So I need a motion to approve the iPads.
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries. Master contract for fiscal year twenty.
I'd recommend that we approve the master contract as negotiated with the NBA.
Any questions? Basically, the master contract is going to stay very similar to what it was with the removal of the language that had to be per legislative recommendation or law, I should say, not just recommendations. Also, the, yeah, the law required it to be removed, the leave of absence was taken out of the master contract, and also the grievance level four was taken out of the contract, which means that the, any grievance would end at the superintendent level and would not go on to arbitration.
And this was what was read upon by the teachers?
Yeah, and the leaves will be in the handbook, along with the other permissive, I think it's appropriate, sort of items. So that's basically what came out with the research from other schools, our attorney, and meeting with the association.
And this, and also, we did add five hours to the database here and stepped.
And I know we had discussed a little bit about changing the salary schedule, but that's all staying the same, like steps and lanes, there's no change to that. That was discussed? So I need a motion to approve the contract.
Make a motion.
Second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Certified staff handbook.
Um, like Wes said before, certified staff handbook is basically the things that were taken out of a master contract, either by law or by agreement.
And we added that cell phone policy?
And we did add the cell phone policy.
So at the end there, we added a page that basically has a law of what FLMLA is, and this is clear, basically. And then the other thing we had discussed is there was different concerns that have expanded across years, basically about cell phone usage. So that'd be a new thing, not necessarily new, I think it maybe was talked about, that it's actually going to be a policy that anyone driving a school vehicle is not allowed to talk, text, or anything while they're driving. And in the same policy, it also says that it could be, it could be grounds for termination if you are reported to be talking, texting, or any of those sorts.
So that expands from school buses to school vehicles, so.
School vehicles for all employees, all employees driving. It's in all the, it's in the classified handbook too, so the same policy's in the classified and certified handbook, so it applies to everybody.
I think you were to send out the contracts.
Sorry, I'm going to send the letter, the part where they sign it and send it back, with the contracts. Right, and it looked like, yeah, everybody was going to see it and have a chance to read it and sign it and return it. And the other thing under professionally, but I saw was that we added a little clause in there that says state tournament attendance will not be granted as professional days. Teams must qualify to attend state tournaments as a school contract.
And that is something that I, I learned in the system that we've had, and if you guys don't agree with this, we can pick that up.
I think we definitely need some clarification around it, either we would allow it or not. So, you know, it's one of those things, if they allow a professional day for a coach to go down and watch a state tournament, even if it wasn't our team going, I mean, I do see some benefits that could provide, but I mean, I don't know. Is that a professional day or not? I guess that's kind of a great thing, because we look at professional days more towards the educational side than we do the F one side. So if you all agree with the additions.
And we would, with that, I guess what we would do is we would allow them to take a personal day, and if they wanted to, if the team wanted to go, then we would rent them to be in the white room with other activities with that, so they would just pay for the fuel, basically, and cover the drive.
So if the staff took a team, even though the team wasn't in the tournament.
They would have to take a personal day.
But then they would still have to take students, or if they want to take students.
Then they just take a personal day.
So if you still take a personal, like, you have to take a student.
Yes, yep.
Great, yeah, I don't know if they have the responsibility then.
Boy, just, I think that's a decision that they'd have to make.
So how about if they want to go with the students?
Yep. But we need to, we need to make sure that we're prioritizing the educational piece, because we are cutting school days, so we're cutting ten days out of school here.
I'll make a motion to approve the second. One second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Certified staff contract.
Classified handbook.
Alright, I'm sorry. Okay, approve classified staff handbook.
Classified handbook, I believe, is the same as what we had last year for the most part. There are some, a couple of small adjustments. We clarified the, mainly with on the family leave. Then we added the, we added the clause on cell phones. Then we added the, uh, we added the clause on cell phones.
I notice the secondary high school position sits at twelve months to time of effective effective. On the? Yeah, page number ten.
I'll correct that.
Alright, correct.
I'll do that.
Thanks. Alright, any other questions? I need a motion to approve the classified staff handbook.
Alright, motion.
Second? Second? All in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries approve certified staff contracts.
This is just, uh, formality of them, uh, we tell you, he's giving you a listing of the certified staff. We have none, okay. Um, usually, uh, pre the contracts, so. Better ready to go out? Okay. It's the continuing contracts and then the new ones that we've approved, the novices.
I have the list in here, if you want to. And the ones who? That was it? Oh, I trust, I didn't, whether it's everybody that is still?
Signing them.
I believe that it's, employed, or that we know still employed, plus the new ones, so. Any a motion to approve that?
I'll make a motion.
Second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries? We have one to say no, sorry. No. Okay, no. One no. Approve? A nay, sorry. I kind of bypassed you, I apologize. Approve classified staff contracts.
Um, just need to approve the letters of assignment for the classified staff. We'll need to change this for a couple of retirements that I'm aware of.
He might get the same percentage on the contract. What was the, it was two point?
Two point five nine is what the settlement said.
Motion to approve the classified staff contracts per assignment of the administrators. So, sorry, is this like the president's stuff?
Yes. It, it's, it's everybody other than the teaching staff and administrator.
Did you make a motion then? Or nobody made a motion? Can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second? All in favor say aye.
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 Nay. Nay. One. Okay, great. Motion carries approve administrator contract.
It's just to approve the contracts for the administrators at the same rate as we?
Let me turn it up in the hard can here and you.
Oh, sorry.
We're gonna approve the administrator contracts for, for the raise of two point five nine. Now administrator, sorry, who, who all is included in this? Can you say that? It's the principals?
The principals and myself. And Beth.
For the raise. So, their contract and this. Need a motion to approve the raise and contracts. Nobody, Lori?
Yeah, I was wondering if anyone was talking.
No, no, you're not. Do you wanna make a motion?
To approve the administrator contract?
Yeah, and Mr. Foster's raise.
And this is for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty year?
Yes, it is. Is that, yes, you're making a motion?
Yeah, so I work with motions to approve the administrator contracts for the two thousand nineteen, twenty twenty year.
Okay, second? So are we tabling this? Motion to go down. Shall we let it? Alright.
So the winner will be out with it?
I think, um, it's gonna di, drop because we don't have a second.
Okay.
So, I guess it's tabled.
No, it's not tabled.
It just doesn't pass. It just doesn't pass, no, no.
I guess, can we revisit that after we have our, um, closed session?
Um, no.
No.
We'll have another meeting.
Okay.
Because we will not amend any agendas outside of the twenty-four hour notice, cause it's not an emergency, so we'll have another.
Well, we just changed the, um, order agenda, we're not changing anything on the agenda.
I don't feel comfortable doing that. I will not do it.
Okay, I was just asking.
The, the agenda should've been prepared that way, so the answer's no. We either pass it or we don't, but in the past, just for history, usually, um, administrator or the superintendent contract has been negotiated separately, so we've always done that at a different timeframe, and we've always just approved the raises at the time, so it would be nothing different this year than at any other time for more clarification on that issue or non-issue. I don't know what to say on that, but, um, that's usually how, like, if we look at our, um, minutes from July of two thousand eighteen, that's what we had. We had approved only a raise for the superintendent and nothing more. If that helps or changes anything for anybody. But, um, it will let it drop and we'll revisit it, uh, and next we can add another meeting for me to, um, in a week or whatever, we'll just have another meeting with that topic on it.
Bye-bye.
Alright. So, um, personnel, number twenty-three. I didn't see any listed on, uh, the agenda, okay? We have no personnel items? So, um, next item is a closed session, which I need a motion for someone to read.
Uh, I need a motion to go into closed session, uh, for twenty-one, point five, aye to value professional competency of an individual whose appointment, hiring, performance, or discharge is being considered unnecessary to prevent needless and irreparable injury to that individual's reputation, and that that individual requests a closed session.
I need a second? I'll second. And we'll call. Bob? Yes. Liz? Yes, Lori?